Now seven o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order and as our first order of business. Open up my agenda here. I'm gonna kick it over to Dr. Portis to read the statement of compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Senek. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law nineteen seventy five, chapter two thirty one. Notice of this meeting has been properly advertised in the Daily Record and Suburban Trends. Its agenda has been posted at the appropriate locations and a copy has been filed with the Biquanik Township Clerk.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Blumer.
Here.
Mr. Cerisi.
Here.
Ms. Dempsey.
Here.
Mrs. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. Gittin.
Here.
Mr. McSweeney.
Here.
Mr. Pompeo.
Here.
Mr. Senek.
Here.
Mrs. Shenton. Not here.
Okay, well, everyone please stand for the flag salute. Okay, before we get into my report, uh, we have a resolution that has to be moved and I'm gonna ask Mr. Cerisi to move. The resolution under flag salute on the agenda.
I would like to approve April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four through. Where are we talking about? Uh, resolution PMC two fifty six dash twenty four.
Second, any question, discussion? Mr. Dr. Portis, please call the roll.
Yes.
Sure, why not? Yes.
Ms. Dempsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gittin.
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney.
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo.
Yes.
Ms. Shenton is absent. Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Senek.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, all right, that brings us to our presence report. Uh, good evening. Welcome to our May twenty eighth regular business meeting. I hope that everybody had a restful weekend and while it's great to have a three day weekend, we must always remember those that made our freedom possible. Therefore, I'm gonna ask now that the board joined me in a moment of silence to honor those members of our military that made the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. Tonight, the board will receive training from our NJ SBA rep, Ms. Charlene Peterson. This training session will give us six credits out of the ten required to attain master board certification. Uh, next, a couple of things. I attended the PTHS Spring Concert and Art Show this past Thursday. Once again, the auditorium was packed and once again, the students did not disappoint. The art show was amazing. There was many different forms of art, many different types of art, and when I saw the names of the students on the art, some of them really surprised me at how how. Introspective and just great they were. Um, very, very good show. The concert was also flawless with the students playing outstanding selections that carried a message and also had me tapping my foot, not too proud to say. Uh, the greatest part of the show was was the support that the students showed for one another. It was very cool, also very heartwarming to see how strongly our students support one another. And for those of you that were there, you you can understand what I'm what I'm saying. Uh, on another note, the Veterans Wall Committee will have a pre-construction meeting with our subcontractors this coming Thursday on five thirty. And our PTHS marching band will play the National Anthem at Yankee Stadium on June fourth, which I will attend. And last, I want to remind everyone that your CSA evaluations are due on six three and now pass the mic over to Dr. Portis.
All right, thank you, Mr. Senek. Trying to point out, for those of you who know me, know I am completely incapable of multitasking, so this juggling my report with Mr. Gibbs's report poses a unique set of challenges. Uh, just my my report's pretty quick. Uh, Memorial Day Parade, which we marched in yesterday, was a huge success. Um, I'd like to give kudos to Mr. Splain and the organizers for the parade for staying the course. I know that there were torrential rains early in the morning and all kinds of predictions. And they they got it right and it really was a wonderful event, so thank you for your work there. Uh, looking forward later on this week, we are later on next week, we have kindergarten orientation taking place in all three elementary schools on June sixth. Like to thank the three elementary principals and Mrs. Smith for their help in placing students as well as we could. And Ms. Bronco also helped us out with determining some of the placement for students who had special needs. Uh, last week, Quantic Township High School prom went very well. Students had a great time and really dressed for the event. We're very impressed with the behavior and it sounds like everyone who attended really had a wonderful time. Then finally, I just wanted to say there are lots of events at all the schools to celebrate the year that we have had, as well as the fantastic students that uh, we are so fortunate to work with. Uh, the next three or four weeks should really be a celebration of the whole educational experience. And we're excited to share that with our students, our staff and the greater school community. So. Should be very busy over the next sixteen school days and busy oftentimes equates to fun. And now I'll provide the. Report for the business administrator.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Do you know ballpark of how many kindergarteners we have registered for next year?
I'd say we'll probably around. Probably around like one thirty five, one forty right now, so.
So keep it steady with pastures.
Yeah, so so good class sizes. Um, and. I mean, it's with with rolling admissions, it it's challenging. We we put up a huge map um, to try to determine what the cut lines are gonna be geographically. Um, but it was good. It worked out pretty well to keep even class sizes and we're looking at class sizes around nineteen twenty. So I'll double check my my numbers on that though, but I'm pretty sure that's where we landed. And we'll probably get a few more over the summer. Um, if they continue to come in. You're welcome. All right, now the long awaited uh, business administrators report. Free proposals for the before and after care program been received and are currently under review. RFP or request for a proposal for a school physician went out on Monday, May twentieth. The board will be reviewing the proposals and will make a determination at the June twenty fourth board meeting. That's for the RFP for school physician. This is just a reminder that we are in the process of setting up the October two thousand twenty four New Jersey School Board Workshop Early Registration. So we will need to know how many board members will be attending. This year, the dates are Monday, October twenty first through Thursday, October twenty fourth. Finally, the tenth town meeting will be held on Wednesday, May twenty ninth at seven P M, located at the high school auditorium. So we'll be right here tomorrow night at seven. Town meeting will be a zoning board of adjustment meeting regarding the approval of one school globals new facility that'll be located across the street from the high school. Thank you. And with that, I'll pass it back to you to be able to pass it to.
All right, let's give it to Ms. Peterson to perform her training.
So I too will be at Yankee Stadium on June fourth.
Ah.
So I'm excited that your band's gonna be there and yeah. So. So tonight, I'm here to just kind of take you through the superintendent evaluation process and probably the the sounds like the the biggest way I can help. Tonight is just to encourage everyone who hasn't done it yet, right, uh, to to get it completed. So just gonna. Kind of take you through the right crack that whip, right? Take you through the process and just um, you know, make sure that everyone understands just kind of what's behind it. Um. So as we talk about the superintendent's evaluation, just want to make sure that we're looking at it from the perspective of. The opportunity for the board and the superintendent to strengthen their partnership. And say that, you know, the superintendent's an ex officio member of the board, we should be working together to move. To move the school district forward and this is having this conversation and having this relationship is a way that um, helps us do that. Um, you know, with everything acknowledging that all of this work is for the benefit of our students. So having said that, we recognize then that this process has some legal components to it. So this is what is required of a superintendent's evaluation, that the board has to evaluate the superintendent at least once a year. Has to be in writing, they have to meet to discuss the findings, has to be based on goals, so that's why we have those annual goal conversations. Um, objectives and set any responsibilities to the superintendent and criteria prescribed by the state board of ed and we'll look at that in just a minute. So then kind of how we carry that out is saying that we need to be done with the entire process by July first. Has to be prepared by a majority of the total membership of the board. Needs to include areas of strength, areas needing improvement, professional growth tied to how our students are doing. And then we should have a summary sit down conference with the superintendent and it's also encoded that that should include a majority of the total membership of the board, that summary conference. So, you know, I will sometimes get asked from boards, you know, saying, we recognize New Jersey School Boards as a tool, do we have to use your tool? And so my answer is you have to be in compliance with statute and code. And so how you do that is up to you, but using our tool is one way to make sure that you are, you don't even have to think about it. It just, you know, allows the process to happen. Um. If any board member had a relative that worked in the district, you would not be able to participate, uh, you know, essentially. And I just had someone ask me, well, can, you know, if they don't fill it out, can they sit in with the discussion? And so. Essentially, when you're a board member with a conflict, you have no more rights than any other member of the public. So you would not be able to participate in any way that any other member of the public would not be able to participate. So just to make that distinction. And then. You know, one of the things I used to get asked is, okay, like, if we don't get it done by July first, what happens? Like, is there a board police? Like, what, you know, what happens to us? So one of the things that happened is that. In twenty eighteen, when CUSAC changed some of the indicators, one of the indicators that was changed was including one now that assigned six points. To the board finishing this process by July first, so that's why we make sure then that. You know, six points is a lot of points. We don't want to give them up just because the board didn't get his work done on time, so we just want to make sure that that's the case. And then one of the things that's getting a lot more attention this year is um, in letter A, where it's it says that new board members have to. Um, have been trained in the process. So it's also in code that new board members are supposed to be trained within six months of taking office on the evaluation process. Which I guess would make sense before you fill it out, it would help to know how to do it, right? So um, so for those districts that are undergoing CUSAC, it has been asked, how do we provide that evidence? Um, and it would be the fact that your members took governance one um, is kind of the the official way to to acknowledge that. But then also even like the minutes from tonight that would demonstrate that I was here to provide training on the process. So, oh, see, I'm pointing, there we go, whoops. Uh, it's gone, I always thought I was going backwards, it's gone forwards, okay. Seems like either way I press it, it's gone. Okay, I'll just go here anyhow. Um, so in terms of of looking at the evaluation then and recognizing what the slide that I missed was just recognizing that it's a process. And it's not something that we just say, okay, it's time to start the evaluation now that it's a one time thing. We actually have to think about it as being a process that lasts a full year, right? And the process starts when when we're having that discussion about the goals. Um, you know, we're acknowledging like, what are those three or four things we think are so important to move the. A district forward with that we're gonna hold the superintendent accountable by putting them in his evaluation. So that's how the board helps have an impact on what the direction is of the district. And then recognizing that if we stay in our roles and then if we're not in the schools and we need to make sure that they're well run, how do we do that? And the way that we do that then is through the evaluation process, but if we're not in the schools, the way we can. Um, you know, know what's going on is through evidence, requiring evidence from the superintendent to make us aware. It's also a challenge too for new board members who don't get started until January. So you have perhaps already missed six months, you know, the evaluation year starts on July one. So here you are coming on January one, the goals have already been set, six months have passed. Um, and so now that when it comes time to evaluate the superintendent. You're need going to need to rely on how can I be sure about things that happened perhaps when I wasn't here? And some of the one of the most important ways you can do that is from the superintendent providing verifiable evidence that these things happened. Um, so in terms of, like I said, New Jersey School Board's tool helping you to be in compliance. Um, we developed the tool in partnership with the Superintendent's Association. And the tool has two sections, so one of them looks at those district goals. How did we do on those goals that we agreed upon? Would move the district forward and then also said that it needs to be based on professional standards. Um, so there are national leadership standards that used to be called ISLOC standards, now they're called the professional standards for educational leaders. So they are accomplished verifiable standards um, that are used nationwide to evaluate um, educational leaders. And when we talked earlier about the legal part of being prescribed by the state board of ed. Well, the New Jersey State Board of Ed adopted these professional leadership standards. So that's why then our tool is in alignment with that. So as we look at the tool, it essentially has three components to it. So the first part of it is recognizing that everyone's voice has the opportunity to be heard individually. So it starts with the superintendent providing some input for board consideration. And then each board member logs in and fills it out on their own, so each board member's voice is heard independently. But then we recognize then that once we have those individual voices, now we need to bring those voices together into one compiled document. So that's then what our tool does is essentially as soon as the the first board member's done, it starts this compiled document. Then when the second one's board member's done, it adds it to it, so that when the last board member is done, the compiled document is done and ready for the board. Um, and then. I just set a flag in our system that just says, yes, the board is done and then the board president has access then to download. That compiled report. Um, so but we essentially say, okay, we consider those compiled report that to be a working document for the board. Um. And then the the third part of this then is taking that working document and saying that it includes everyone's opinions. So when we give the superintendent his actual evaluation, it is what is the majority opinion? And that is extracted then from from that that working document. Um, and then that template is completed, signed by the board president and the superintendent. And then that is what's considered that the superintendent's actual evaluation. So in terms of the process of how we get started, so the process is started with the superintendent being the first one to log in. Um, to to the tool and then after the superintendent is done and hits submit, there's a forty eight hour window built in for the superintendent to go back and say, oh, forgot to do this, should have said that, right? Um, and then once that forty eight hours is up, then an email is automatically sent to all of the board members with the link for you to log in and complete your portion of it. So this then is what that goals portion looks like. So like I said, it starts with the superintendent inputting the district goals. In this section, the superintendent is able to do a self assessment of saying, do you think um, the goal was achieved? Do you think satisfactory progress was made or do you think little or no progress was made? And sometimes as we're seeing more multi-year goals, sometime if it's year one, like satisfactory progress may be the best that we're able to do because it's a multi-year goal. So sometimes that may not be considered, you know, not the best option. Really, it may be the only option because it is a multi-year goal. Um, and then the superintendent can either provide comments or can provide like an evidence link for the board to look at. So the benefit is that right while you are in the tool, while you are considering, you know, the evaluation of this goal, you can look at that evidence. And then as a board member, when you log in, you'll see what the superintendent. Put is his self rating, look at the evidence he provided and then you are able then to provide your rating. Do you think the goal was achieved? Satisfactory progress was made or little or no progress? And then you um, can provide comments or remarks supporting your rating. And a lot of times I see board members when they fill out these comments, fill them out as if they're speaking to the superintendent. You're actually speaking to your fellow board members and you're explaining, why did I give this rating? Why? So that when we sit down together and we talk about the majority opinion. I now have a clearer understanding of what you think and what that majority opinion looks like. Because I have supported my rating with comments that can help give the rest of the board a deeper understanding. Um, in terms of the goals portion, so these are those six standards, um, the uh. The national standards are are, I think it's nine or ten and we took them and consolidated them into six. Um, but also just wanted you to look at the rating scale and see the option of the last rating of not observed. So for those board members who are new and even to to other members, if you feel like you truly have not observed something, just want, you know, especially for new members, you to. Feel comfortable participating where you can and then not feeling pressured to participate something that you you just. Had not been here to see. So recognize that that is an option that's neither a negative or a positive, it just is strictly an acknowledgement that it wasn't observed. So this is a sample of what one of the standards look like, so just wanted to kind of point out a couple of things, it looks kind of busy. So one of them is just kind of um, for those ratings of exemplary proficient, like this is. Um, one of the things that we have found is that we needed to provide kind of a definition. Of what that like, what exemplary looks like for this standard, what proficient looks like, because we were finding in the past that. Two board members may have the same thought about the the superintendent's performance, but in one's mind that equated to this. Um, rating and another board member's mind it equated to that rating. So we kind of wanted to make sure that we were having some common language about what that meant. Um, you can kind of see in the red there, the opportunity then, so while in the goals, the superintendent was able to do a self assessment. In the standards portion, there's not a self assessment, but there is the opportunity to provide. Evidence links. So then again, you would be able to click on that link and be able to see what evidence the superintendent um, provided for you. And then what we're really interested in is what is the overall rating for this standard? But instead of going right down to the bottom and just clicking that, we wanted you to be thoughtful about how you were rating that. So that's why those indicators are listed for each standard and then you're asked to like, put an X in the box for each indicator. Um, recognizing that that's not gonna automatically fill in the standard that, but it. It helps to make sure that you read it, you thought about it and you have, you know, really considered. What your overall rating needs to be based on those indicators and then again, have the opportunity to provide comments for your fellow board members. I'm clicking away here. Okay, there we go. Um, so in terms of the then recognizing then that when the board is done, like I said, here's that compiled report. Um, and then. Said as soon as the board's done, then it has access to to the board president then to to download it, so it will have. Report part one is how is the goal section, part two is the standard section, and then there is that template to fill out. Um, so this is an example then of what that compiled document might look like. So in this case, here's an example of a goal, the goal portion of it, where the the superintendent um. Marked that thought the goal was achieved, this was eight board members filling out the evaluation, six members agreed. One member thought satisfactory progress was made, one thought little or no progress was made. Um, you can see then the superintendent provided some comments and then for the board members. The compiled document lets you see what each board member said without identifying anyone. And the asterisk just means as a different board member speaking. So that same thing would be true then for a standard, so you can see how all of the different indicators are compiled. And then can see what the overall ratings were. So this then will help guide that discussion about what the uh, majority opinion looks like then. So, and like we said, so right now we have taken the individual um, responses from the each one of the board members. We now have a compiled document. So now we need to extract from that compiled document what the majority opinion is. Um, and that the template is the way to record that. So this is um, in looking at the template, it helps as as we think about those things that were in statute and code that said that we had to make sure we followed. Um, it talks about the, you know, in the template, the accomplishment of the goals, how do we do on the leadership standards? Um, what are the areas of strength? What are areas for growth? You can provide any overall summative comments and then has the um, needed signature lines. Oh, why? We're not getting along. There we go. Um, so this is a sample of what the template looks like then, so it will, again, like I said, will take each goal and say how, you know, what's our overall rating? Um, that we'd like to, you know, share with the superintendent that reflects the majority opinion. What remarks or comments do we want to share with the superintendent to help support that rating? The same would be true for the standards as well. Um, and then. To identify those areas of strength. Okay, so then to identify those areas of strength, it um. Allows you to do it based on standards so that we make sure that we're evaluating the superintendent against like professional criteria in terms of looking at strengths. Looking at areas where more growth is needed and then the open ended box. Um, with the last piece of the process then being that annual summary conference, which is the the sit down conference. Um, between the the board and the superintendent. And if we remember when we saw the statute and code, it said that it should, you know, be attended by a majority of the total membership of the board. So, you know, one of the things that we suggest from New Jersey School Boards is that all board members who are not conflicted should be present. And part of the reason is is because that um. Annual summary. Performance report, we said it includes the majority opinion. What if I'm the holder of the minority opinion? When we looked at those goals, when it was like six people agreed with the superintendent, but two other members had different ideas. What if I was one of those members that had that different idea and it didn't make its way into the evaluation? One of the rights that I have as the holder of the minority opinion is that I have the right to be heard. So this summary conference would be the opportunity then for me to express or say. What I feel like I would need to as the holder of the minority opinion and since we never know who might be the minority opinion. That's why it's important to give everyone the opportunity um, to be there. Now, I've talked to to some boards and say that, you know, it kind of makes sense for them that they um, will perhaps have like the. The board president and maybe another person sit down with the superintendent a couple of days ahead of time, hand them the evaluation. Say, here you are, this is what we were thinking and then be prepared then for an informed discussion with the full board like a couple of days later. So, you know, as long as at some point that the full board is, you know, involved in that process. And then just kind of in terms of thoughts, um, so this is a calendar and you're gonna look at and say, okay, we're probably already past that, right? Or, um, so just what's important, I guess, is that we say, start from the back, start from the end of July first. And say, what do we need to do to be done by July first? So ideally, we look at this and I got the sense that this is where you're you're already thinking and already planning, you're saying, when's our last meeting in June? Right? That's when we're gonna have that summary sit down conference with the superintendent. So now let's back it up, then what's the other, what's the next meeting we have before that? That's then when we should be determining that what that majority. That's then when we should be determining that what that majority opinion is, then back in from that. Then what does that mean? Then the individual board members need to be done to allow those things to happen, to allow the brighter of that majority opinion document. Once you've gotten the feedback from the board, allow some time for that and kind of build your calendar that way. So again, trying to use it, your existing meet, like, give yourself enough time that it allows you to use your existing meeting schedule versus some boards that are panicking and have to call a special meeting because they're not done by the time, you know, that their last meeting in June is done. So just kind of trying to plan this out enough to make sure that you stay in compliance. Um, so in terms of looking at a process and saying, okay, you know, what what makes for a good process, making sure everyone's voice is heard. The board has come to a consensus on the majority opinion. The rights of the minority opinion can be heard. We're building a productive relationship with the board and the superintendent. We're in compliance with statute and code and recognizing that all of this work is a framework for student success. So and again, as we think about this process, you know, think about it is it's not just a once-a-year thing. It's time to do the superintendent's evaluation now. To think about the fact that it starts on July first. It essentially starts with the with the goal-setting piece of it. Um, you know, we should be getting progress updates. How were we doing? So that when it comes time to do the evaluation, there's no surprises because we've already have been having this dialogue and we're aware of the progress that we have been making. Um, make sure, you know, one of the things boards have a tendency to do is just look at kind of like what happened last week or like what's the latest and greatest big thing that just happened? And sometimes that tends to take more of a priority in the evaluation as opposed to thinking like this is looking at the whole scope of the performance over a full year. Um, the importance of evidence, communication, and all of us who can bill, which in your board's case is everyone um, to to complete it. And really, you know, if we think about our governance responsibility, um, you know, and we say that um, you know, we're exercising our oversight, we're making sure that our students are getting the education that that they deserve and holding the superintendent accountable for that. This is one of the most important ways that we help make that happen is through the evaluation process. So we should be um, making sure that all of us are taking that commitment and completing that evaluation so that your voice can be heard in this process. Um, that was all that I can in terms of walking you through the process. I mean, it it would be unusual if it were just because obviously the superintendent is that person's super right, right? So it would be, it's usually just the board and the superintendent.
Thank you. First of all, this is very helpful. I had a couple thoughts and questions. So first, first and foremost, thank you for that rating scale definition. I think that's going to be incredibly helpful. Um, when it comes to the indicators and then helping to determine the standard, is there some sort of rule that we should be using like three of these, and and I know that you said that there isn't and it won't pre-populate, but we all last year had very different feelings about sort of the numbers and what they would equate to. And so there was it was a challenging conversation amongst the board.
So, you know, some of the, one of the pieces that's missing from that is if like, if you think about if we did it that way, that would assume that every indicator is weighted the same, right? And some are not. And even in the same board from year to year, what's really important this year may not be as important next year. So that's why it was hard to do anything more with them, but use them as a guidance because only you as the board members would know what kind of weight needs to be assigned to that. And so, you know, like you say, part of that would probably be even coming to a consensus as a group on what those indicators mean and the weight of them.
So it's probably too late for us this year, but maybe next year before we can get together and figure out the meeting before we put out. Yeah. Thank you.
No, thank you. Good question. Anything else? No, my pleasure. Enjoy the rest of your meeting. Good night, everyone.
All right, Ms. Peterson, again, thank you. Always love when you visit Paquana and train us. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on in the agenda to the approval of the minutes, I'm going to ask Ms. Esposito to please move the minutes.
I'd like to move the minutes from April 29th, 2024 and May 13th, 2024.
Uh, second. Any questions or discussion? Dr. Portis, please call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Charisi.
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey.
Yes.
Mr. Getton.
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney.
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo.
Yes, to April 29th, abstained to May 13th.
Mrs. Shenton.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Sannick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. Members of the public may speak for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting. Publicly speak on any agenda item during their five minutes. If a member of the public raises a question, the question should be directed to the board president and please state your name and sign in before you begin. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. Uh, first action item for approval is PMC. I'm going to ask Mr. Charisi to please move PMC.
I would like to move PMC 257 dash 24 through PMC 280 dash 20.
Second.
Uh, Bloomer, second. Any question or discussion? Dr. Portis, please call the roll.
Mr. Bloomer.
Yes.
Mr. Charisi.
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey.
Yes.
Mr. Getton.
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney.
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Sannick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up we have CIS. I'm going to ask Mr. McSweeney to please move CIS.
Yes, I'd like to move CIS uh, 99 dash 24 through CIS 106 dash 24.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Dr. Portis, please call the roll.
I have a quick question uh, on CIS dash 103 dash 24, just from my own knowledge. Uh, notice that there is one uh, alumni on on the list that at least I know. I was just wondering how many alumni uh, are returning back for uh, approval of teacher placements in the district.
I'll have to get back in that one. I mean, the one thing I'll say is looking at the resumes that come through, it seems like a good amount. Because I always seem to see at least three or four a year, I think.
It's nice to see that we're a district that is welcoming back its alumni.
Anybody else? Dr. Portis, please call the roll.
Yeah, I just, outside the current role as business administrator, I would say as superintendent, we we do like to act as stewards for the profession and encourage as many student teachers. And when we do get uh, young men and women who are alumni, it is a little extra special. So we have had a few come in. Um, couldn't tell you I'll fan the numbers, but it's uh, something we definitely welcome. All right, Mr. Bloomer.
Yes.
Mr. Charisi.
Uh, yes, to all except for CIS 99 dash 24 as it pertains to me personally.
All right, thank you, Mr. Charisi. Ms. Dempsey.
Yes.
Mr. Getton.
Uh, yes, to all except on CIS 99 24 where it pertains to myself.
Yes. Mr. McSweeney.
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Sannick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, before we move on, can I ask, I I missed a question that I had on PMC and I just want to ask real quick before we move on. Uh, we we voted on a volunteer videographer. Who um, who is this individual to the district? Is it a current student?
Uh, no, uh, interestingly enough, William Tedeschi is a former Ithaca Bomber teammate of one Danny Portis. Uh, prior to that, he was a Paquana Golden Panther. Yeah, very good wide receiver.
All right, next up is FFA. Mr. Bloomer, would you please move FFA?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move FFA 153 dash 24 through 175 dash 24.
Second.
Any question or discussion? You guys are sure? No question, discussion? Not going to ask me later? All right, Dr. Portis, please call the roll.
Mr. Bloomer.
Yes.
Mr. Charisi.
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey.
Yes.
Mr. Getton.
Uh, yes, to all except on FFA 154 24 as it pertains to myself.
Mr. McSweeney. Mr. Pompeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Sannick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, I'd like to take a moment just to thank the PTHS Association of Music Parents for their very generous donations to the PTHS.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomer. All right, there is no policy tonight, so that brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Members of the public may speak once for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting. The public may speak on any topic during their five minutes. And if a member of the public raises a question, direct a question to the board president and state your name and sign in before you begin.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? My name is Danielle Alman. I'm the area director of the Boys and Girls Club in Paquana. Recently, we were asked to submit a proposal for our before and after-care services to be provided for the 2425 school year. I'm here to speak about the benefits of the Boys and Girls Club remaining as the provider of these services. Boys and Girls Club has been a licensed after-care provider in Paquana for 18 years. Started as an in-club program where we bus children from their schools to the clubhouse. Unfortunately, the need for childcare exceeded our building capacity, and we needed to find additional ways to best serve our community. In 2013, the district and the Boys and Girls Club partnered to offer these programs in North Boulevard and Dureyce Elementary Schools. Although there is another after-care provider in Hillview, we continue to the state and still bus children to the club as a supplemental option. Boys and Girls Club does not turn away any families. We work closely with school administration to make sure families who need us most are able to take advantage of our program. We were recognized by the Department of Child and Families, allowing us to accept those who qualify for financial assistance. In addition, Boys and Girls Club supports families in hardship with our own scholarship program, the Neighbors of Hardship Scholarship Fund. We understand the importance of time spent outside of the classroom being just as crucial as inside the classroom, which is why we, during our after-care program, provide Power Hour, which is a homework-helping incentive, Triple Play, a curriculum focuses on mind, body, and soul, smart moves, uh, drug resistance, and peer pressure awareness. We also, in addition, have recently implemented mental health resources for our members and our staff as our part of our trauma-informed initiative. Our club is consistently evolving to make sure we are serving our community's youth to the best of our ability. Boys and Girls Club is not an outside organization. We're your neighbors. Mars neighbors supporting our community is a top priority. In addition to our regular program content, our after-care members write cards to our Paquana High School alumni who proudly serve our country in the military. They support our local police, fire, and health workers. They host book drives to donate to our local library. They collect canned goods for the local food pantry. And we partner with the school nurses to provide an annual gift drive for local families in need during the holiday season. Our program promotes good citizenship and respect for a community that we all love and call home. The positive influence of Boys and Girls Club after-care program doesn't end when they graduate middle school. It impacts high school students entering the workforce as well as alumni. One of the best qualities of our staff is that they can relate to our members as many are former club members returning to share the same positive experience they had while they were growing up. In our Paquana Before and After School Program, currently 25 of our employees are current or former high school students. In 2016, Paquana District introduced the Work Study Program, and Boys and Girls Club was happy to provide employment for those students interested in this field. We were delighted when one of those students recently came to us, Mackenzie Griffin, a 2016 high school graduate, applied and was awarded a full-time position of Youth Development Director. Macy currently oversees the Paquana schools that we service right now. Boys and Girls Club after-care program is not limited to childcare. We foster a safe and educational environment for students. We mentor students to respect and become leaders in our community. We encourage them to give back to our community. We provide employment for those new to the workforce. We create a home away from home. I ask the deciding committee to take into consideration the benefits and history of the Boys and Girls Club as the before and after-care provider when amorting the contract for the 2425 school year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Magdalena Arnia Greiser, and I am a mother of two boys that actually use the services of Boys and Girls Club. I'm also a doctor, so my hours are unpredictable, and Boys and Girls Club accommodated whatever I needed during the pandemic uh, in a day's notice. They accept my boys for before and after care, which was an incredible uh, thing that I couldn't accomplish anywhere else. The boys are really happy. They thrive over there. They cannot imagine not going to before care or after care. They also go for the summer camp, and I think what is one of the most rewarding things that they feel like family. We truly, Boys and Girls Club are part of Paquana. They know the kids from high school, and they're always around. They see their counselor, they see their after-care um, peers when we go to Paquana uh, parks, when we go shopping, we constantly see each other, and they're actually part of my family. We um, we go there often. Philip and Alex, these are my two boys, cannot imagine not seeing Danielle. Thank you for accommodating us every single time. Uh, and just even recently, we're supposed to move, I pull out of the summer camp, and we decided to stay because this is a beautiful place. And once again, Danielle and Boys and Girls Club stepped in, and they really gave me my weeks back, and the boys are super extra happy. That's what the what the what they would say. And what I've noticed that um, the after-care that provides my boys help with schoolwork and with their homework is truly valuable to me. I often come home 6:00 PM, 6:30 PM, and it's really late. I really have time just to have a little bit of fun with them and just put them to sleep. So without their help, it would be really difficult to maintain their uh, level of education and really being engaged and really doing whatever is expected of of our kids and perform in school. So if uh, we could um, keep Boys and Girls Club as our primary before and care providers uh, in our Paquana Township Schools, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Michael Matthews. I am a town resident. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club. Um, as a school teacher myself, I know how imperative it is for our children to be nurtured and supported. Um, when we moved into town in 2018, my daughter, the day of we moved in, uh, was diagnosed with brain cancer. Uh, we spent a year and a half in the hospital, and I don't know where my family would be personally uh, without the Boys and Girls Club and Ms. Altman. Um, I had two little kids, so while we were in Robert Wood Johnson with my daughter Gianna, uh, my daughter Riley, who at that time I think was five, yeah, five, um, uh, my daughter Riley, who at that time I think was five, yeah, five, um, was bouncing around from house to house as we, you know, trying to navigate um keep getting my daughter better. Um, so I don't know where we would be without them. And my daughter Riley has grown. Um, she's matured. Um, it's not just an after care program. It's not just a pre-care program. She's learned. She's uh, her social emotional skills have grown. Um, she feels like she's part of it. She feels that she's at home. Um, they were there with birthday cards for my daughter Gianna. They were there for Christmas presents when we personally forgot about Christmas uh for my daughter, both of them, uh, because we were in the hospital. Um, I don't know where we would be, and I mean this sincerely. They're not just a business in town or a club or they are the town. Um, so I don't know what else to say, but how grateful I am today, tomorrow, the rest of my life, the rest of my children's lives. This is the reason why we moved into town. Uh, it's because we wanted to feel part of the town. We do feel part of town and I'm grateful for everything that they do and for what the town does for our family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and there's not much I can say in response other than thank you for sharing that. I appreciate everybody spoke very elegantly and eloquently. Um, I also sincerely hope your daughter's doing much better. Um, and obviously the board has, as well as I, uh, have a lot of work to do with making uh an important decision and we're taking in all the different inputs.
Yeah, I don't want to really comment on what any of you said just because of the fact that everything is still under review, but um yeah. Blessings and prayers go out to your daughter. Um, and we'll take everything you said into consideration. Okay, that brings us to unfinished business. Does any board member have any unfinished business? Any board member have any new business?
So I'll just put it out there that um I'm probably going to say this and then we're going to get a ginormous Strauss SMA package full of policies to talk about in June. But at this point, we don't have anything on our plate. So if there are any policies that um you would like the policy committee or myself and Dr. Portis to talk about, to take under review, anything you've come across that hasn't been touched in a decade and we need to take another look out, uh, please feel free to let me know before the next workshop meeting and we'll put it on for discussion.
Dempsey, I have a question. Do we have like an inventory of everything with their latest review date? And if not, maybe at some point we should consider starting that because then if we just have a cadence that nothing sits for so long, then
Yeah, I think such a thing did exist at one point in time, but with turnover in board um secretary and other positions within the board office. Um, I think it may have gotten lost in the shuffle, so we can definitely look at that. It would be a bit of an undertaking to go through every single policy now and kind of create a new spreadsheet, but I mean, we do have something.
Intern project.
Yeah. Yeah.
We don't have, we're talking about like two hundred maybe document. You just got to flick to the back back page.
And see the date on them.
Date, right? It's not.
I'll do half if someone else wants to do the other half.
I mean, I'll do half. If you want to do half.
We, uh, all right.
You you do the first half because you'll set up the spreadsheet nice and then I'll.
I'll do the first half.
If you get, if you wait, if you can hold off on that until July, I can help. What's not working?
And one quick note.
Have something that just needs to be updated.
Yeah, and um from my office, Karen was checking on Strauss's website uh to see if they're if they're teasing that something's going to be coming out. And what we do have is that they're working on something for AI, which I think is really important and and a a touch overdue because our AI policy is tucked into plagiarism and the the usage is much, much more wide ranging and expansive than that. So um, odds of us getting a nice two hundred page dossier from Strauss pretty strong. And a good thing is I believe that an AI policy will be tucked into that.
Yeah, something we discussed at the delegate meeting of AI policy.
Okay, any board member announcements?
Um, real quick, CPAC. So let me just open my, took a screenshot of it. CPAC will be having um a CPAC parents only open forum meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, May twenty ninth at one P M and seven P M at the Scribble Garden. Um, it's your opportunity to meet with the executive board um to learn learn more about CPAC and tell them more, give some feedback as to what topics you'd like to learn more about and how things went throughout the year.
Uh, last weekend I attended the NJ Delegate Assembly of Representative Paquana. And it was a lot of good discussion. We discussed AI, full day kindergarten, things like that, a lot of uh definitely some heated discussion and I enjoyed it and I enjoyed representing Paquana.
It was shocking to me that there are still districts that don't have full day kindergarten. It's ridiculous.
And there is something um that's in the works and I I think I just caught up Mr. Bloomer to look at making uh kindergarten compulsory because right now he's still still not required to send a kid till they're six, but yeah.
I just want to say that on Monday, um some of the board members marched in the Memorial Day Parade and as usual, it was fantastic. Uh, the rain didn't scare anybody off. It was packed. Uh, the window that we got, it was storming at six thirty in the morning and somehow it was dry as a bone at nine at nine uh when we started um gathering. And it was great. We handed out enough, but we had enough of the lollipops uh because Mr. Sannick listened to me this year. And uh, it was great. Now I've seen everybody out there was uh fantastic. Mr. Spillane, um, again, it's a friend of the board, did a great job, of course, organizing like he always does.
All right. If there's no other announcements, uh, we do have reason to go into executive session tonight. We will discuss matters related to an RFP, which if discussed in public could grant a competitive advantage. No action will be taken and we will adjourn from there. Our next meeting is June tenth here at the high school. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Second. Bloomer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, everybody.